The other meetings that you gotta go to, it's like, I'm on a police commission?
Well, comment at the beginning and on agenda.
Correct. This is how we always done it. Then the council, and then we adjourn.
Right.
Largely in charge in about a minute and a half here. Get closer to the door.
Everybody ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Let the realtors and the...
Mine says seven.
Fifty-nine.
Okay, no one go with the one up there? Nope, that one's, waiting for that one. Okay. Are we? Okay. There you go.
I'd like to call Ferrisburg City Council Meeting to order tonight, Monday, February 18th, 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hop.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember DeWitt.
Here.
Councilmember Twa.
Here.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Councilmember Blyce.
Yep.
At this time, I'd ask you to stand. The invocation will be given by Councilmember Twa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that you would challenge each other to reach higher and further to be the best that we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
This time, the agenda is for public comments. For any citizens to give direct, brief comments or questions to the city council. Time for public comments will be given when an agenda item is discussed. If you have a comment or question, please raise your hand to be recognized by the mayor. After being recognized by the mayor, please stand, give your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comment or question. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Yes?
Lisa Royce, 17700 Navajo Drive. I have a couple things I'd like to address. First of all, I called in and I talked with Debbie. There's a real problem with you guys not speaking in the mics. And when we do go watch on YouTube to watch the city council meetings, we can't hear a thing. So it's kind of a useless tool if you can't hear. So I'm not sure if we need to have everybody pull the mic up every time they talk, get a new mic system. But, I mean, we went through all of this, which is absolutely wonderful for people that don't live here in the winter. They can see it when they're in Florida, whatever. But if we can't hear you, we can't get the information that we need. And the second thing that I want to address is hopefully, I think it's number F on the work session, which we don't get to talk about, about procedures, is I believe that public comment should be the last thing on the agenda after your reports. You guys are our eyes and ears for stuff that we don't get to see. And when you guys tell stuff, we should be able to ask comments and not have to wait two weeks in order to get a response or to be able to say something. And in the past, there's been times where we do public comment, and then you have a comment to us, and then we can't comment back. So I, I think, you know, you are our representatives, and to be open and honest and transparent, we should be able to have the last say at a meeting. Thank you.
Other additional public comments at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move down to item six. Consideration approval of consent agenda. A, approve the February 4, 2019 city council meeting minutes as printed. B, approve the revised Freedom of Information Policy, FOIA. C, approve the amendment, the agreement with Republic Way Service to provide a one-day residential trash pickup for Saturday, May 18.
So moved?
Support.
Motion, support? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving down to seven, new business. A, the public hearing to determine the necessity for proposed improvements to Piney Point Drive north-south section. And this is a public hearing, so the public hearing will begin at 7:04. Anyone here for public comments on Piney Point? Yes, sir? Yes, and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Steve Munson, 18940 Piney Point. I just wanted to say that I'm in support of the policy that is being reviewed by you guys.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing at 7:05. Moving down to seven, B. Discussion and take action if appropriate to adopt a resolution declaring city council's intention to make as a public improvement the reconstruction of Piney Point Drive north-south section to request the city assessor to prepare a special assessment roll for the project and to schedule a public hearing to review the roll on, review the roll on March 4.
Your Honor, I would make a motion to adopt a resolution declaring the city council's intention, blah, 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 for this whole project. Support?
Motion, support. So at this time for comment, I mean, for discussion, we have been waiting to hear back from our city attorney for his opinion, because there is one parcel, if you look at the map that was given, there's a parcel, a very large parcel, it's pink on your map. And the resident is able to enter the parcel off from North Shore Drive, but it is, it appears to be large enough for that parcel to be split. And if so being split, there could possibly be additional residents on Piney Point. So this is...
Correct, so to clarify, the parcel in pink was not included in the special assessment notice. They didn't get a notice of it. So we're waiting for the city attorney. If this parcel has a chance to be in the special assessment district sometime in the future, if it gets split, we should notify the property owner that he might be included in the special assessment at some time. So we're waiting for the answer on that, how we do that and so forth. So we don't have the answer to that. So it's be staff's recommendation, have this be tabled until we get the opinion from the city attorney.
Your Honor, we table this until we get the notice back from the attorney.
Craig, I'm confused here. As I'm, as I'm looking at this, there's five parcels here in the pink. They all appear to be a Piney Point address, correct?
No, it's, it's all one parcel. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lots.
But it is one, currently one parcel?
One parcel, and there's one house on it that accesses the house off of North Shore Drive. Since it didn't have a direct benefit to the Piney Point, that's why it was not included in the original notice.
Ask you this, if in the future he splits it and develops it, would he get an assessment for the property splitting off?
That's what we're determining, trying to find out the answer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
People are, people are getting assessed by the linear footage on the street, I take it?
Per lot.
Per lot?
Per lot. So if they own one lot, they go a certain amount, two lots, one and a half lot, three lots. Most of them are one, one and a half, two, three.
So this individual has one lot or five?
This individual in pink?
Yeah.
The individual in pink? He has one parcel with eight lots.
Mr. Pink. Eight?
Eight lots.
Eight.
But there's only, the ones that'd be special assessed would be the ones on Piney Point. Depends on how the property was split, though. You know, if you split it east and west or north and south, I'm not sure. I don't know how it could be split, but it's large enough parcel where it could be potentially split in the future.
Public hearing on March 4th, we're gonna have to kick that back?
First public hearing would be repeated on March 4th, the second one on March 18. However, all the information that we have received would be read into record from last week, our prior council meeting, and also then tonight's council meeting. So, yep. Mr. Pink, did you want to speak? Okay.
Would it be possible for the city map that you're...
Here.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we don't have this, I mean, we have this map, but you don't have this map.
It's right, they just put up on the screen.
It's on the screen behind it.
That's okay, she just popped it up, it's fine.
So all the orange lots got noticed, those are the lots that'd be special assessed. You can see some at three, two, one and a half.
So that then the, the public comment, first public hearing would be on March 4th, the second public hearing would be on March 18. With this being tabled at this point, so. Any other further discussion? And Steph has the comments to add to the next public comments. Okay. All right, all those in favor stating aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving down to seven, C. Discussion and take action if appropriate to advertise the sale of the 2008 International Dump Truck. And there's information in our packet that was given to us by the DPW supervisor referencing this pickup truck, so. Dump truck.
Your Honor, I would make, yeah, we need to take this off the table. We tabled it prior to this, I recall.
Correct.
So I would make a motion, we take this off the table, and...
So there's motion, support? So we'll vote on this? All those in favor moving it from the table, stating aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Your Honor, I'd further make a motion that we take action to advertise for the sale of the 2008 International Dump Truck.
Motion, support? Further discussion? All those in favor stating aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving down to our next agenda item, seven, D. Discussion, take action if appropriate to adopt ordinance number 302 in ordinance to amend the city code, Chapter 154, zoning, Article 3, by adding Section 3.360 to prohibit marijuana establishments in all zoning districts and to not permit marijuana establishments as home occupation. This item was requested upon by Mayor Pro Tim O'Donnell to have it returned back onto the table for discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd make the same motion I made before, is to approve the ordinance, or to adopt the ordinance 302 in ordinance, blah, da, da, da. Support?
Motion, support? Further discussion on this agenda item? Yes?
Well, like I stated before, my only concern with this is I hate to have the city of Ferrisburg lose any possible revenue down in the future. So I know we can come back and address it again and change some things, but that's my concern. I just don't want the city to lose any possible revenue.
Okay. Taken in November was, the residents did support it, not by a large margin, but it was supported by our residents.
By 12 votes.
By, yep. But it was, it was still passed, so. Any other further discussion?
By the state, though, wasn't it an overwhelming vote?
Debbie, do you remember?
Yeah, it was.
The state was, yes.
So, kind of being a pickle.
The county was overwhelming, no.
Okay, so at this time, public comments? Mr. Nash?
Thank you. I don't think it's any secret that I'm...
Mr. Nash, can you state your...
Oh, John Nash, Spring Lake Township resident. That I'm very much opposed to the recreational marijuana. We already have medical marijuana. And I do appreciate the fact that you already passed the prohibition. I assume you're pretty well aware that about 80% of the municipalities in the county have already passed both of them. Spring Lake Township being one of them, Grand Haven Township has passed the prohibition. And the mayor tells me the, the ordinance will pass. I just hope for our area that you take the second step here and do pass the ordinance so we can have our area basically free of concerns of stores and farms. Thank you very much.
This is your time to speak, if you wish to speak.
We have something on the books, I'm satisfied with what's on the books presently. I'm waiting for the state to step it up. I would like to have some direction from the state of Michigan instead of the other way around. It seems to me they're waiting for all the municipalities to, to do some groundwork, and then they're gonna pick and choose what they want, and then they're gonna decide what they want to do. And I would like to see the state get some skin in the game and give us more direction as to what we can and cannot do, because I'd hate to have somebody come in here, start up a business, and then they make a law, you don't have enough people in it, because they can do, they can do anything. They can say, well, you gotta have so many people in an area to have one per capita store. I mean, all different, different, there's a lot of unknowns. And so until we know something, I think we should just leave it as is. It's just my opinion.
Yes.
Sandy Tugger, 17939 Dogwood. Just have a question. If you guys do approve this ban, I'm just wondering how that's gonna affect medicinal growers that are already licensed medicinal, medicinal growers that may already be in the area? If they're gonna have to close up shop because of this ban? So, just curious about that, how that would, is this, is this a blanket ban that would cover medicinal use as well as recreational sales?
Going to affect medical marijuana? If they have a card, if they're licensed with the state?
So the, the growers themselves wouldn't be affected?
I'm not sure, is it growers?
Okay, just curious, thanks.
Lisa Royce, 17700 Navajo. The voters voted. I think when we go over what the voters voted for at this level, I think Kathleen's correct. We should wait for the state to make an overall view and then go to your community. I think putting the cart before the horse. I mean, the sky didn't fall. Chicken Little, nothing, nothing's like chaos happening since it went into effect. So I, I think going ahead of what the voters said, I mean, the voters voted. Doesn't matter by 12 votes or one vote. I mean, we could say a lot of things about that in, in the current climate. So I think, I think you should wait. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yes.
Councilmember Blyce.
No.
Councilmember Twa.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Yes.
Councilmember DeWitt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy.
No.
Mayor Hop.
No.
Fourth revote, passed.
All right, moving down to our work sessions. Our first agenda item that we have for work sessions are 2019, 2020 city budget.
So we're gonna start working on the budget. This is some preliminary stuff we're putting together for the budget. We want to get some feedback from council. And we're moving in the right direction. I get this. So here we had leaf pickup last year. We had 83 hours, the cost was $22,000. We had less hours than previous years, but the leaves fell late. We're planning on doing the same thing for 2019, fall of 2019. Spring trash pickup, in '18 and '17, we did no fall trash pickup. '15 and '16, we did a fall pickup for '19. At this time, we're just gonna plan for a spring trash pickup without a, a fall trash pickup. First pickup, we used to do monthly, April through October. Last couple of years, we've been doing every month, every other month. In '19, we planned to do the same, April, June, August, and October. This is, the police commission meeting, had a meeting earlier, a couple of weeks ago. We have a deputy retiring, and at the police commission, it was, just talked about replacing that full-time person with another full-time person and keeping the same staffing level that we have currently. This is the police pension. This is when the joint police department with Spring Lake Village dissolved. Went down to a negative in our pension, it was at 633. Over the years, we've had a couple deputies retiring, and they're starting to creep up a little bit. In 2018, we made two extra $10,000 payments on the pension as it's Spring Lake Village. We haven't got the 2018 actuary report yet, so we're not sure where we're sitting. And at the police commission, we talked about doing another $10,000 in 2019. So we're gonna plan for doing that.
Quick, quick question, Craig. We put $10,000 in there, this would be an additional $10,000?
Yes.
The second $10,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct?
2017, but it's gonna change from 2018, but we do have deputies retiring, and so they're still drawing on their pensions, so. We think it's not gonna go up much. Hopefully it went down a little bit, 2017.
Craig, the other thing is, all our deputies are of the age where they're not on the retiree medical yet? Or do we have one on there yet, right?
There's one former officer on medical.
He goes off this year?
Year, a couple of years, I think. I think it's a couple of years.
All right, thank you.
These are some, some of the things we do in our community promotion. The chamber contract expires this year. This column, the right-hand column, is what we paid in 2018. The newsletter, the picnic, Fourth of July. Garland, we went over a little bit on the Garland. We, we had some money budget for banners, we did not do the banners last year, but beautification commission is working on banners for 2019. And so pretty much we'll keep the same list and the same cost estimates for the 2019 budget year. Late last year, the governor signed a, a law making some grant money available. Projects, our reconstruction of city streets have maximum grants $250,000, minimum match is 50/50. Roller work associated with other infrastructure such as water and sewer projects will be given additional consideration. Additional consideration on the last line, if it gets completed by the end of 2019. We have Dogwood Drive scheduled to be funded with federal highway dollars in 2022. Couple other major streets that need some work are 168th Avenue and Carmen Drive. We're looking at Carmen Drive, it is really getting bad shape. We had a cost estimate from the engineer to reconstruct it. If we're gonna reconstruct Carmen Drive, we want to replace a water main underneath the street. It's currently a six-inch water main, we're proposing go up to an eight-inch. If we did that street, it would qualify for the criteria listed in, in previous slide. The total cost of the Carmen Drive would be $944,000. City costs would be construction, we did a 50/50 match, we'd be responsible for engineering and any contingencies. It'd be $444,000, and the water phone would be responsible for the water main at $259,000.
Are we looking at doing Carmen before 168th?
That's what we're considering, we want to get feedback from council on this. One more slide, and then we can open it up. This is the Public Improvement Fund. At 2018, we had $374,000 in there. We're gonna get some money in during the year, put some money out for North Shore Drive. We're expecting, anticipated fund balance at 630, 219, at $364,000. In 2019, 20, we're gonna do, spend some money, put some money in there. So then at 6, June 30th, 2020, we're down to $315,000. And then we put some money back in after July 1st, 2020, take some money out. Here we had Carmen Street kind of penciled in there, $500,000. If we were gonna put, go for the grant, we'd have to move that up there. You see there's $315,000 in there, previous slide showed we need $444,000. If we were gonna move in and try to do the project in 2019, we would have to probably loan, the general fund loaned some money to the Public Improvement Fund. And so this is where we'll stop and take a pause and talk about Carmen Drive. Do we want to move forward with that in 2019, 2020? Do we want to look at 168th Avenue? 168th Avenue is eligible for federal funding. I'm not sure there's any water main projects that we would do with that.
My mind, 168th is a more highly traveled road, and it is literally falling apart.
Plus, with the bridge, too, if the bridge ends up being closed, 168th's gonna be well-traveled.
Personally, I would think that would be a priority.
Benefit of doing Carmen over 168 first, according to our goals, would be to do...
I would have to talk to the engineer about if there's any infrastructure that we could do with 168th Avenue. I was thinking about a month ago, there was something in your packet about Carmen Drive being, getting in bad shape. It is getting in bad shape, and pretty soon it's gonna be gravel. And that was a street that was special assessed to property owners along Carmen Drive. They paid to put that road in back 25 or 30 years ago. So, you know, the city needs to do its due diligence and maintain that street. But we can look at, get some more information on 168th Avenue. If there's some water or sewer mains in there that we can do, make it eligible for the grant money, we could look at that.
What is the thinking behind going from a six to an eight-inch water main on Carmen? We have no additional factories going in out there, we have no additional houses. So what would be the criteria to have to increase that water main?
Thought is that you shouldn't go less than an eight-inch now. Everybody recommends an eight-inch water main.
That's probably true if we're redoing a new street or re-gutting a street, but there's nothing there. You have, what, three factories and, what, six houses on Carmen Drive? You know what I'm saying?
Currently, but something could change in the future.
What can, what can change? The only thing that could change is if a plank sold out and sold the property, because they own everything out the end of the street. There is no, they ain't got property there. So there is gonna be no development. So what we have is what we got, and what we're gonna have. So I'm not necessarily opposed to repaving it. As far as doing the water, I mean, it's adequate for what we have now, I, I just... You know, my thought, thought process is, you know, if we're gonna have a development out there, yes, I could understand going, upsizing that, that water main. But it's been in there, what, 40 years? It's worked just fine till now.
We're not having any complaints with water pressure or, okay?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we have an issue with water pressure or something, that's a different issue. Or if we have a bad pipe, now we're talking a different issue, but just to replace it, because we're doing a street. I'm not sure that's a prudent spend, spending of money there.
Raised equipment, we had some money come in. This was the balance at June 30th, '18. We'll have some money come in, money going out. Pickup, lawnmower. Expecting to, June 30th, balance of $200,000 in there. And then we'll have some money come in, money go out. And then we have some money come in and go out. And the millage expires in... And the millage expires in two thousand twenty-one. Two thousand, or last year, we had a water asset management plan put together. These are some of the things that they thought we should be doing. Valve project on Van Wagner Road. Let's put a valve on the east on the west side, in case there was ever a break, we could isolate it. We got it in the budget to do this year. Willow Drive, Willow Drive Water Main, that has been done. Some upcoming projects, the next one would be a transmission water main, that's from the end of Norfolk to the Spring Lake Village. Put a, make a loop between Spar and Royal, and a loop between Pepper Mill and Jordan Lane. And then, some typical maintenance work that's in there. This is mostly done by Auto County Public Utilities, they own all that infrastructure, but the North Bank communities are responsible for the cost and maintenance of them. When they put the plan together, they put cash flow analysis together. They project an assumption of two percent increase in the water rates every year, and the revenue would raise, the expenses, and what's in the, in the water fund. So, sixteen, or seventeen, eighteen, we raised the water rate of three cents a cubic meter. Last year, there was no increase in rate of surcharge or water rate. This year, we're looking at a proposal of thirty-four cents for increase in rate of surcharge, and a two-cent increase in cubic water meter. If that were going to effect, it would be a dollar seventy more a quarter, or six dollars eighty cents a year, or three-quarters of a percent increase. We're proposing no increase in our sewer rates or rate of surcharge for this year.
Good question, Craig. We already bonded and paid for by the rate increase for the lift stations and the forest main, that's all taken care of.
That's what, that was these increases in here, the thirty-five dollar a quarter, and the rate of surcharge was to cover the bond payment. So, the bond's been sold, and we are starting to collect on those.
Thank you.
We're working on a recreation commission, put a site plan together for new playground equipment at Fire Barn Park. We thought we'd be able to do this with raising donations, the cost about a hundred four thousand dollars. We've been advertising and trying to solicit donations, we have thirty-two thousand dollars pledged, a little over, about eighty-five hundred dollars in donations received, and we've got about forty thousand seven pledged for that site plan. And this grant, we, and this year, we put together, or when we put the budget together, was twenty-five thousand dollars in there for kind of a match for a grant. So, city council's probably going to have to have a discussion one of these days, if we don't raise the hundred four thousand dollars, is this something the city council wants to contribute towards to get this playground equipment over at Fire Barn Park? Pictures of the bridge. Couple of weeks ago, the city engineer put together a report on the inspection back in October. She thought maybe the city might want to look at a rehabilitation project. The cost of that project would be five hundred forty-two thousand dollars. There would have to be a five percent match from the city, and the city would be responsible for engineering, so the city cost would be about ninety-two thousand dollars. These are her words, "We're not including work on the beams, we're not doing anything to improve the load rating or change the posted load limit, would also not stop deterioration of the beams, it may slow it a bit, but the damage is done." So, this is a pause, do we want to move, look at a rehabilitation, put a grant in for that this year, or not?
Let me ask you something, Craig. If we put in for a grant for this, is that going to affect our grant to replace the whole bridge?
That could be a consideration for the committee, that they just gave us money, and now we're asking for more money to replace the bridge.
So, it would be in the city's best interest to not ask for a grant for this, because this isn't going to do nothing but throw a lipstick on a pig here. I mean...
It's not going to do much, though.
It ain't going to do nothing.
Exactly, I mean, that bridge isn't going to fix itself, and I don't want to put good money after bad type thing.
Board knows what they're going to find once they do strip it off.
Yeah.
Like the engineer said, they're going to end up having to put all kinds of steel plates on it and everything else.
Right.
City cost.
Mm-hmm. Going money away at this point.
Yeah.
Have you heard back if that still grant would be available?
We have not heard yet.
My point being is, if they give us five hundred, or three hundred thousand, whatever, grant for this, to do this cosmetic surgery here, they're not going to give us money for, to replace the bridge, not within, what, four, five, ten-year time span.
It's not going to improve that at all by doing anything like this, so...
Okay. That's all I had at this time. We still haven't got any final numbers yet, the assessors and the marshmallow, we will be meeting next month, and then we'll finalize our taxable values for upcoming year, what the taxable basis for the city will be.
Minus ten million for the bridge. Print it.
Moving, moving down to seven F, it's going to be the work session on city council procedures. It's in our packet before, and this has been dated since two thousand, so it's definitely a time that council needs to review. What staff has done, has gone through on that cover sheet, item one, so if you flip through your packet, things are changed, item number one. The blue information was deleted, would be deleted out of this. I'm hoping everybody had an opportunity to review all of this, and see where we're at, make notes. So, what would be removed is, at the November fifteenth, two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine organizational meeting, city council set regular meetings for the first and third Mondays of each month at seven-thirty. Well, that has since been changed. So, that section is removed. Moving down to item eight. Item eight, it was just a grammatical change, instead of "on," it goes to "by Friday," which we get our packets. Item number nine, numbers two, three, and four were rearranged. So, currently, we do public comments at the beginning and at the end, and number eight and nine would be switching that to make council reports first and public comments second. So, that would be a switch there. It was a recommendation from resident and also finding information from Michigan Municipal League to make that change, but that is just a recommendation from MML. Our agendas have been this way for many, many years. So, right now, I'm seeking council feedback on this item.
I think it works. I believe it is.
So do I. Been done this way since sixty-three.
Down to ten, there's a couple more grammatical changes that needed to be made, making the sentence read more general, more gender-neutral than a "he." And then, moving on to number eleven, Opens Meeting Act Handbook, prepared by the state, that information has been placed in here also, along with grammatical changes. And then, the last paragraph under item number eleven, have the second public comment read the same as the first, and then that was reiterated in here, which is what we do currently. We allow them, okay. Moving down to twelve and thirteen, proposed changes are to reflect the practice of allowing public comments on agenda items, which we do allow that, so that has been striked out. The numbers are changed, thirteen becomes twelve, and then the new thirteen is added in there. Number fourteen, there's just a correction, making it "if" instead of "it." And then, number twenty-three, changes it from two thousand. We're recorded on cassette tapes, and we know that we are currently recorded and livestreamed. So, a lot of information was in here. As always, it's a good working document to continue to reference back to. I think staff are going through this, definitely it was time involved, so... Does council want to give any additional directions to staff on any type of changes, or the corrections and changes that were made stay as is?
I think it's adequate.
Is adequate as is? Is it adequate as is? Okay, staff has direction on that one, then. Okay, moving down to seven G, work session, redevelopment-ready communities. Craig, can you walk us through this, because you were part of the conversation along with them?
MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, has a program where they call redevelopment-ready communities. And these communities got to go through a certification by the state, the things that, a number of things you have to do, your zoning has to be up to date, your master plan has to be up to date, you have certain things in place to make your community ready to be developed if developer comes in. One of the criteria is, you have to have a traditional downtown. When the MDC was here, they looked at our Pine Street corridor, they would consider that a traditional downtown, if the city designated that was. In our master plan, the Pine Street corridor is designated as a central business district. And so, with that, they feel we qualify and be eligible for this program. There's a number of things that staff has to do to get ready to do this, it's a time-consuming project. Some communities take nine months up to three years to do all the work that needs to be done. There's training that has, the staff has to go through, two days of training. You can do the training onsite, or they have seminars. If it was going to be done onsite, it can be done online. There's probably sixteen hours of training on there. If council wishes the city to move into this direction and to be eligible for some possible grant money through this program, staff and, we could work on doing this together and putting the documents together.
Definitely see the benefit of that, if it allows us to seek more grant funding to come through.
Craig, the grant funding would be for specific projects, like the Fire Barn equipment, Coast Guard Park equipment, or would it be, explain to me what the grant, grant request that we can apply for, could be used for?
So, like, Spring Lake Village, they sit there and they're doing that art, and they did the whistle-stop campaign, and since they're in the process of becoming a redevelopment community, MEDC will open up some money for them, so that if they could do a grant match. So, if they raise a certain amount of money, the MEDC would match that dollar amount. And so, we're not eligible for that, because we're not ready to develop it or in the process of doing that. So, they could, what they call is Patreon City, where you can sit there and, it's like a GoFundMe page, where you sit there and donate, and then after the tally's up, and then the state will match it.
So, basically, any grant money we get through this request would be for recreational-type activities, or...
And they do help you grant money to, to do some of these things that you need to do. Do you have a downtown plan, do you have a capital improvement plan? You know, what, how do you do public participation? What's your zoning regulations? What's your best, or how do you do development? Do you make it easy for the developer? Do you have a fee schedule? Do you accept the credit cards? Do you have PDF links on your, or PDF documents on your website for the public? Do you go to training? Does staff go to training? Do elected officials go to training?
Understand all that, but what, I guess, our intent of doing this is to get grant money, correct?
Correct.
And specifically, what can that grant money be used for? I mean, some grants are for roads, some are for bridges, some are for this...
They changed what they offer the money grants for, so it's a different program all the time, it's a rolling program.
Okay.
Whatever the communities are looking for.
Okay.
You know, they're not talking a lot, large dollar amounts here, you know, fifty thousand, is probably one of the maximum grants I've seen. Yeah, solid, but one of the issues with our bridge is, it doesn't have a lot of commercial or industrial traffic over it, it's a lot of residential. And so, you know, it's, gives us a low mark on our grant applications. I think it, you know, opens up some doors to some possible grant money, I think it's worthwhile looking into, as long as state council is aware that it's not going to be an overnight project. It's going to take some time to do this.
And the concern I have is, you know, we don't have a huge staff now. I mean, is the staff capable of doing all this paperwork and education and such what, and continue to do their job properly?
I think so. I think a lot of the stuff we do already. It's just, you know, the training, you know, sixteen hours, I could take eight, Debbie could take eight, you know, you have sixty days to finish your training, once you start it.
So fun.
We're volunteering again.
Challenge every day.
Okay, so consensus I'm understanding tonight with council is to have staff move forward with this?
Yep, I think that's a good idea.
All righty, get some money, it's worth it.
Perfect. Seven H, moving down to strategic plan. Your strategic plan was in the packet a couple of weeks ago, I'm hoping everybody got one. It's just a time to go through if there is any questions or changes. Staff has done a great job of updating items along the way. First couple of pages haven't changed, but the outcomes, the outcome indicators, some of those items, we can, you know, when we revisit this again, some of those items will be removed off it, the strategic plan, because they have been completed. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this? Did people have an opportunity to look through it? Because our goals pretty much run parallel to what we have with us.
Well, a couple, couple of things that I noticed on here that we originally put in here that are no longer relevant is strategic involvement, sand mine property, acting role in developing and planning the property. You know, at that time, we wrote this, we were under the impression that it was going to be a residential development. So, you know, we want to be involved as far as the county park development, but that's not a high priority anymore, because, you know, so I think that should maybe be...
So, then it was assumed that this would be revisited then, within the next year or so. But another strategic plan meeting. Down, delete, work with county again, but I just wanted to bring this to the forefront again, because we didn't, our strategic plan was canceled for this year, where we'd go through this line by line, looking at our SWOT analysis and seeing what needed to change or adjust. But having that, had that done this year, I just want to take this opportunity down the work session, giving people a chance to review it, and if there's questions that staff could answer, or any adjustments. And some of the items have been marked off, some of them, a lot of them are still ongoing, and some of them just aren't obtainable yet, so... Any other feedback or questions?
One of the things we talked about, the strategic plan, was to manage the city. PBS now, if somebody sends a package to, they have to pay an extra fee. Because everything now is considered very, very...
Typically, that's, that's
Ever since, since the conception of Ferrisburg. But I'm getting concerned now, especially when, when UPS and FedEx are saying, well, we're gonna deliver, instead of delivering to, uh, you know, Roosevelt Street in Ferrisburg, uh, we're gonna charge you 17 more dollars because, uh, or you can send it to, send to Roosevelt Street in Spring Lake.
Mailing address is Roosevelt Street, Spring Lake. That's what UPS delivers by. I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I, I live in Ferrisburg, I got Spring Lake mailing addresses, most of us on the council end.
I, I know, I know it does, but we, if we want to, uh, distinguish ourselves, that's something we're gonna have. I would like to take a look at a way to do that, where we can distinguish ourselves from, from Spring Lake.
Pretty simple. I think, I think this is I just don't see where we're gonna get anywhere, telling Mr. Trump to call the postmaster general, to, to call the guy in Ferrisburg to, you know, put route delivery on, it just ain't gonna happen. So, you know, unless you are personal, you have personal connections somewhere, somewhere along the line, we're, that, that's not gonna happen. So, I, you know, I, I just don't see where, you know, it would be nice to have our own post office, our own postal, you know, motor routes and everything else, but that isn't gonna happen. And I would be shocked in five years if that post office even here. Personally, I, I just, I've heard rumors for what, the last 10 years they're gonna close it.
Well, we're fortunate that we still have it, but I, I agree with you, Mike, I, I don't think it's gonna last. The only reason why it does is because the city has to have their mail box. That, that's our saving grace.
Well, Replains, Replains were always a, a big supporter of it too, they wanted their mail delivered to Ferrisburg.
Right.
So how that's gonna change with Gary's passing is, you know, who knows? I mean, he was adamant, he wanted his, you know, so I, I don't know.
Good point, Tim.
It is a good point, but I don't know about that.
All right, any other discussions regarding around that? Okay, all right.
The strategic.
Schedule to, um, at some point, if we wanted to have the county come in again, like we did, take aside a couple hours to revisit it at some point. Um, I know summertime people get busy and people are on vacation, so maybe I'll try to get something going. Okay, you got it. Okay, here we go.
You better get a half a dozen then.
All right, thank you. Um, moving down to eight, public comments. Yes.
Lisa Royce, 17700 Navajo, um, obviously, I'm disappointed that you didn't change that. Um, you guys work for the city, the people that vote in this community and we should have the last word, so whether it's been working for all these years, some things do change. So, um, I'm truly disappointed that, uh, we don't get to hear or get to comment on things that are happening behind closed doors until two weeks later. I just think that's not transparency. Thank you.
All right, hearing none, city manager's report.
No report.
Councilwoman Carlson, we'll start at this then.
What is tonight, Mr. Carlson on first base night? I get called for the roll call vote first, which I never do. And now, public, public comments first. Debbie, thank you for grabbing the bull by the horns on the sound system with your letter today or this week and making sure all of our mics were placed forward. It is a problem, I've heard it from a number of residents, uh, because there's well over 100 views of each meeting on YouTube, isn't there? So people are watching it, even though we don't have a lot of people here in attendance, people are watching it and it's unfortunate when people can't hear. And so we really have to make a conscious effort to speak in the microphone. So I'm, but once again, thank you for sending that out. I know that when public, when the public does comment to city council and make complaints or comments, we always get notified, which I'm very thankful for. Kitchell Linquist, Dune Preserve, um, meeting tomorrow night 6:30 here in City Hall, across the hallway. Our intern once again worked out so well last summer and into the fall, uh, that we are entertaining, doing it again this, we have the funds available and we're entertaining, uh, doing it again in this next season. And then additionally, we're looking at painting the, uh, educational building as well out there and doing something with signage. Okay, so, that's all.
No report.
Beautification committee has started working on the 4th of July activities. End of report. See how early we start?
Uh, this Friday, I will be, uh, going to Lansing to attend my first, uh, committee meeting, uh, on the transportation.
Uh, the tree board met last week, yes, we do have a tree board. And, uh, we're gonna just meet just bef, or just right after the recreation committee meeting. So the next recreation committee meeting will be Wednesday, March 13th, and then the tree board will follow right after that. I will not be at the March 4th meeting. End of report.
Um, I'd just like to say thank you to the residents. Um, I had residents that assisted with the Walk for Warmth a couple weeks ago, we raised, um, more money this year than we have in the past. It was just shy of $200, so it was kinda cool. Um, also, that was a special shout out to Stephanie Rahilly because she came and walked along with the dog and it was a great turnout, beautiful weather, cold, but it was, it was nice. Um, along with the, the tree board, we are doing our first annual Arbor Day celebration and the tree board has picked a tree and will be planting a new tree along with that. So that's on April 26th at 4 o'clock. And so with the 4th of July, we have the poster contest going again for the second year. And so excited to reach out to the, um, elementary students in the area for that, so. End of report.
Motion to adjourn.
Class dismissed.